Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Here.
JR, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll just stay, remain standing for a few minutes. I know we had a loss in our community yesterday evening. I believe we had a young man that slipped and fell in the gorge area. Just his family might be eased, that our firefighters will be safer in their recovery. Thank you. Counsel, approval of the agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu.
I'm sorry.
Approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Yes. Okay, we'll go to item A, Town Hall Drive Construction Award. Jake, I guess we'll turn to you and French.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers. Mr. Bellis, this, as you'll recall, was on the May 13th agenda for bid award. Some questions were raised appropriately regarding the apparent low bidder, and since that time, I went back and kind of researched the history of this project in conjunction with the application of the Governmental Conduct Act and prepared a memo, which I believe is attached to your packet materials. My ultimate conclusion was that there was no potential violation of the Governmental Conduct Act that could be achieved by awarding this bid. So, the, all the planning materials and bid materials, I believe, are also in your packet. French Espinosa is, of course, here to answer any questions about the project itself or the bid process. I, of course, can answer any questions about the Governmental Conduct Act and its application in this case, and would turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for any of those questions.
So, in your legal opinion, there is no problem with moving this forward?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And French, since your last presentation, nothing has changed, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. No, nothing has changed.
Okay. Counsel, questions, concerns?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, French. So, go on to item B, tipping fee rate increase at the town, Taos Regional Landfill. Marietta, French? He was trying to run away, I saw him.
The last time she was kicking out of the way.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, we had this on the meeting for last Tuesday. We have update figures based on the landfill board's rate increase study that was approved at their meeting last month. We came back to let you know what the cost is going to be to the town of Taos customers. And because we have several commercial residential accounts, we had Waste Management send us their listing of all the accounts that we have billed through them with the town of Taos commercial and, commercial residential. And he did the calculation based on the cubic yards of these pickups and the frequency to come out with individual rates for each type of the customers that we have on our base. So, I attached a report from him where he broke that down, and I think you have that on your, on your iPads or your information. The main thing is, the residential customers at 96 gallons, that monthly increase would be approximately 44 cents a month to those customers. And if you see on that page three of that document, it goes all the way down to three cubic yard containers, which are usually, which are commercial customers. So, the largest increase to be, would be $15.60 a month to those commercial customers that have a container and their frequency, weekly pickup is six times a week. So, based on that information, there's a range between 44 for residential and 15.60 for commercial.
I'm sorry, go ahead, commercial again?
15.60?
Increase, 15.60 a month?
15.60 a month.
So, that would be roughly about $2, $2.50 per three cubic yard container, per pickup.
Right.
Now, didn't we have some yard and a half containers, commercial?
What size?
Yard and a half.
Are those the big roll-offs?
No. Those are, those are, big roll-offs, I think, are...
Right, those big roll-offs.
Six yards or something like that.
Uh, well, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Pedalta, those are, those are the, like, 30 and 40 yard roll-offs?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. On a commercial, you have the three yard dumpsters, but I believe that we used to have some yard and a half tubs.
Yes.
So, what would be the cost for yard and a half tub?
Uh, yard and a half for one pickup, weekly frequency, once a week, would be $1.30.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Marietta mentioned, this went to, to the landfill board at last month's meeting, and there were three options that were discussed. The board opted to, to support option, option C, because it puts more of the burden on, on the commercial accounts versus the residential accounts. Every, every member within the enchanted circle, over the years, has made accommodations to support their solid waste program, which means that every year, they increase an incremental amount, again, to support their solid waste program. I, I think the town of Taos was the exception to that, or, or they might have done it in part. In addition to that, the, the rates of the, at the landfill have not increased since it became a regional landfill, which was about 13 and a half, 14 years ago. So, the initial report that was done by the consultant then was, it was recommended that the, the rates be looked at every 10 years. So, we're, we're four years past that right now, so we're, we're in jeopardy of running in the rears if, if the increase isn't implemented.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
French, with regards to the increases in the 10-year mark, is there a formula in place that, I guess, would make incremental increases as operational costs went up as well? I mean, I know one thing 10 years ago that wasn't as evident as, as now, is the cost of fuel. I mean, everything that's kind of mixed into the mix of things, is there a formula that's looked at for operational increase as well? Or are we just, I mean, this increase that we're looking at today, is it sufficient, basically?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Gonzalez, the, the rate study that we, that was conducted for the landfill does take into account future increases. At this morning's meeting, it was discussed whether it follow the CPI or a flat 2% annually, and the board opted to just do a flat 2%, which would, which would make it much simpler for all the members of the landfill to adjust their budgets annually without having to guess what the CPI is or what it's going to be.
But a more accurate indicator would be the CPI, right? As opposed to a 2%?
It would be, however, if the CPI only goes up 1%, but we still have the opportunity to go up an additional 1% if the 2% stays. And if it goes up 4%, we're still covered by previous years.
Hopefully.
Well, yeah, it's, it's our, it's our, our best, our best stab at it, and, and they're basing it off of tonnage that is being received at the landfill.
Okay.
Councilmember, sorry, was that accurate?
As far as I'm concerned, French, and I'm very grateful for your guidance on that and Marietta's, as well as the county's finance men, what I like about option C is that it gets us out of leasing equipment and borrowing money, and will, in a decade, within a decade, provide that the landfill is self-sustaining. Option C, over time, is the most cost-effective way to go. So, I'm totally on board with C. Thanks.
Counsel, president? Just one last question. French, it's my understanding, I think, from a previous discussion, that the amount of tonnage going into the landfill has decreased in comparison to the increase in population? Mostly probably due to the fact that there's no construction going on?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Pedalta, that's absolutely correct.
Do we have any recycling other than tires and wood products at the landfill? In other words, there's no bins out there to pick up newspapers or cardboard or anything like that? So, when, when people take stuff out there, it goes straight into landfill?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Pedalta, that's correct. In addition to those two products that you mentioned, we do recycle the metal. And through, through our recycling program, we were looking at purchasing bins to place at the, at the convenience center, at the landfill, so that we could collect the paper goods before they go into, into the working face of the landfill.
The reason I'm bringing that up is because, you know, trying to make it convenient for people to recycle, and, you know, if it's half a minute off of your beaten path to go to our recycling center, they don't go. But, but people do take a lot of goods to the landfill that could be recycled if, if that was a more convenient way for them to do it. And that's the reason I'm asking the question. If, if there was some way to, not, not just for paper products, but also for metals, I'm talking about cans and aluminum, and also plastic bottles. If, if we had something there, I don't know if people would use it or not, but it might be an opportunity just to, to see.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Pedalta, in, in years past, what we have done is we've gone to some of the larger commercial facilities and asked them to recycle their cardboard, which would obviously reduce their tipping rate at the landfill, and it would support some of the small local businesses that are collecting cardboard, and they have opted not to. So, because of that, we were looking at putting a, a 40-yard container at the convenience center at the landfill, which we would then collect the product and transport it back to the recycle center and process it. I, I'm not, I'm not too sure that we get a, a lot of aluminum, because there's, there's different avenues to, to get rid of that at the recycle center and at Agueda Recycling, where they actually get paid for it. So, yeah, we've been looking into that, and we're, we're trying to purchase a roll-off bin now to place it over at the landfill. And of course, we have the roll-off truck to do our own transport.
Yeah, because I, one of the problems I had when I was a citizen, I don't know if you had this problem at the herb shop, but we would recycle our cardboard so we wouldn't fill up our dumpster.
Right.
So, all the county people who would come to town that didn't want to go to the convenience center used to fill our dumpsters. So, we had to lock them.
Hmm.
I'm serious. I mean, you'd come in the morning and they, they would empty it, and then by that evening, the dumpster was full of trash.
Yeah.
And that was going for everybody in the shopping center. So, you know, it's, the convenience centers that are within the county, just, for some people, they just don't work, because they don't want to drive out there and dump their trash.
Right.
And I think at some point, town, the county's going to have to look at using roll-offs or something like that along the different areas in the communities to pick up trash, because, there was one thing that, I was looking at the news the other night, was in, was Valencia County or Sandoval County, where they found that county property with a, a dump site, that nobody who owned the property, but there was trash everywhere, and it's, it's another county that doesn't do, basically, curbside pickup, and so people just take it and throw it. And now the county's got a $400,000 bill to clean up that landfill, legal dump site.
And I know the county has a lot of convenience stations around the community, and I know that they've been proactive in trying to do some recycling at those convenient stations also, so I hope it'll mitigate a lot of that illegal dumping that goes on. I know we still have quite a bit within the Straight Arrow Road and, and that area back there, that kind of, I want to say, goes along the airport, and there's quite a bit of trash that they did a cleanup just recently on, so.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, councilmember Hahn and, and French, when they came to the conclusion of option C with regards to the increase, did they do a historical data on what the CPI was running? Or was it just, I mean, how, where did you come from, the 2%? Because I'm looking at the Department of Labor's website with regards to the Consumer Price Index, and the average over the last 10 years, has it been 3.8%? So...
Depends on which CPI you're looking at, but it's about six or seven.
Well, the one I'm looking at for is municipalities on waste, so, and I'm looking at the one that Waste Management uses in their model, because they are our operator. So, I know whenever they come back to us and they, they configure rate increases, or when they're going to come to council for rate increase, they're based on Consumer Price Index. So, I'm just wondering whether or not that 2% would be sufficient enough to cover any future increases, or are we going to be in the rears back again, asking for another rate increase? So, just...
Uh, councilmember Gonzalez, I think what he did, he, he took all the factors into consideration. I don't know if he actually took the CPI. He took more our tonnage of what we were collecting and to get to where we need to be on the revenue side to run the operations, because the operations are pretty much set right now. There's not, other than the increase of maybe the CPI of cost on that side, too. So, he felt that that 2% increase, we would not have to rate, increase them in this timeframe of another 10 years. I think it goes out to 10 years.
Because we're on a yearly contract basis with waste, right?
Uh, we are renewal. We are a four-year with a renewal, it's an annual renewal, just to really look at it. And they have a fuel charge and they have the CPI increase. So, those are the two that they have. And so, they've been doing that increase. We've been passing that increase on also to our customers, but we haven't done it on our solid waste pickup side. So, that's why he feels that, the consultant feels that he, in these figures, have brought it out to 10 years, and we shouldn't be in the same situation that we are right now. That's, and the reason for that is that we estimated being in 120 tons a year, well, that hasn't been the case. We've actually been less, so the expenditures have gone up and the tonnage has gone down. So, just, we're just coming back to where we were 10 years ago at bringing in a million dollars. We're not doing anything different, just getting those revenues back, because the tonnage went down. So, he calculated based on the tonnage that we're receiving, and that's how he calculated in the rate. So, and like at the board this morning, we said, well, you know, we say this, just like I said, oh, I'm going to project a 2% and something flaws, something really drastically happens, we have to still come back and revisit those on an annual basis, and that's what we'll do as us, being the fiscal agent, is make sure that those revenues are coming in. This first year, we're just going to get that money in, leave it, put it into a reserve check, you know, on a quarterly, monthly basis, to see how it really is looking with those rate increases. So, you know, it's not a set in stone, it's just a plan out for the next 10 years, but never to get back to where we're at right now.
And I guess the, the reason being is because I'm looking towards the de-acceleration of another cell, you know, getting more lung, you know, life out of what we have right now without the added expense of, of opening another cell. So, and whether or not we have the funds to cover that, I think, last time I talked to French, we're good on it, but at the same point, why spend it if you don't need to?
Right. And I think with a, however the tonnage comes in, and the next plan with this plan, not for this cell here, but is to actually build out a full cell, because it's costing us more money to do the half cells. So, the plan going forward in this option C is to build out a full cell, either be your revenues coming in to support another loan, or to put that additional revenue into the cell replacement fund, not just 120, but increase that as time goes on.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. French.
Counselor, Cantu.
I, I recently opened my water bill, and there was a notice from the town that they're having a special day where they're going to go around and be picking up people's stuff that they normally don't throw in the dumpster. And the public always says, well, for my rate increase, what am I going to get out of it, too? And something that's been on my mind a lot is, I see all the cardboard in the commercial dumpsters all over town, and there's no incentive, is it off? Incentive to take it, and they don't want to pay somebody who has a recycling business to take it for them. Is, can we maybe consider from the town, you know, as a, a day like this, where the town can pick up commercial boxes from the dumpsters? Instead of taking them to the lab, they'll give them to the recycling center?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Cantu, twice annually, the town of Taos engages in a community-wide cleanup, where we go around picking up litter off, off of the roads. And twice a year, we offer a spring and a fall cleanup for, for yard waste, which the, the tipping fee is waived for that day. As far as recycling, I, I don't know. I, I believe that's why councilmember Pedalta was recommending that a dumpster be placed out there, and it could be placed before the scale house. That way, the cardboard's put in and it's not charged for, as it goes over the scale. And, and that would be the, the recycled product. As far as, as conducting a, a curbside pickup, you know, once annually for cardboard, we...
That's not what I meant, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear, but they're filling up the dumpsters that are being picked up weekly. I see it all the time, and they're full of cardboard. And, you know, it's like, the Waste Management truck goes there just to pick up the garbage. They're not going to take the time to separate the, the cardboard from the trash. And something that maybe the town would consider doing, you know, weekly or something.
Well, that's part of the, Mr. Mayor, that's part of the plan that I think Waste Management has approached, and Rick's been talking to him pretty heavily about the, the thought of a curbside recycling pickup. And where, whether or not the numbers jive or, or even doable is still yet to be put out there, because I know it's, it will add cost. Maybe you can shed some light.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman, since it seems to be a topic for a number of the councilors in the last couple of days, what I'll do is, for one of our next two meetings, regular meetings, I'll arrange for Representative Waste Management to come and make a presentation again in regards to their proposals and the rate adjustments that would be required for full source separation curbside pickup, in, in addition to their establishing their regional recycling center, which I want to be clear, is not a source separation facility, but they would just be bailing it, as they do in farming it in, and taking it to their Mr. Mayor, counsel, French, thanks again, and Marietta, thank you. Two items, as we approach a feasibility study to see if we can flat-rate sewage charges, which are undetermined at this point, undetermined whether we can lower those charges, that may offset this increase. So, we're hopeful, but the feasibility study still needs to be done. As most of you know, each month, we meet with our elders, the ancianos head over to the Taos Retirement Village, and our hope is to have two representatives from this council and two from the county commission to just report in to the elders and get, and solicit their ideas as to, and their questions as to what's going on in both governments. A hot topic at our very first meeting yesterday was landfill, and a question that was asked to me, French, hopefully can be answered real quickly, was, do we obtain any revenues from our recycling efforts? I could not answer that question, and I told our elders. Did I get back to them on that? Thanks.
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Hahn, at the recycle center, other than the scrap metal, we don't. As a matter of fact, it, it costs the landfill to recycle the tires and the green waste.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else from the council? I just have one last question. Counselor, broken? And this is not related to anything we've been talking about. French, when we created the regional landfill, one of the concerns in the neighbors was the blowout of, of paper and plastic bags and that sort of thing into the neighborhood. What are we doing to control that? I know we used to get Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and others out there to clean the areas around the landfill. Has that been an issue or not an issue any longer? Because I haven't heard anything recently, so...
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Pedalta, we, we do have a regular litter patrol guy out However, when he's patrolling 80 acres of, of land, it, it becomes a little difficult to control the blown bags and, and litter. In addition to that, what we have is we have some, some wind fences along the perimeter of the working face, and we have mobile screens that we put up at the working face. And what, what happens is that people, people bring their loads that are unbagged and untarped. So, when they, when they unload and a gust of wind picks up, well, of course, the paper and the bag's going to fly all over the place. So, to curb some of that, what we did was at the, at the, through the landfill board, we, we got a resolution passed on, on tarping loads as they come to the transfer sites and the landfill. And again, that, those are the measures that we, that we have in place to help us curb the blown litter issue. There, there hasn't been one time in the last 14 years that a code compliance officer from the state has gone to the landfill and walked away happy that the landfill is clean. We always get a mark for, for blown litter, and it, it, it just occurs, but we, again, we try our best to, to curb the blown litter.
Thank you.
French, is it possible, maybe we can work with our judge? You know, I know there's some community service people that might need some community service, and I think that would fit right within that realm out there. If we can use, we might speak to him, maybe we can ask Mr. Caldwell if he would place that call, if we could use some of them out there, if you would have the staff to be able to, I know you have a person that actually walks and picks it up, maybe if we had a couple of people doing community service on a, you know, one day a month or something, that would, would help curtail some of that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Edward and I have been working on putting together a little plan to where we can try and make that happen, along with getting law enforcement to support issuing citations or tickets or something for when we do find an illegal dump site. I know within the town of Taos, we, we found several, and we collect any names or phone numbers or addresses or anything that we can find within the trash, to see if we can find those, those people. And I, I know that Edward, Taos County, has a much larger problem than we do with, with the illegal dump sites, and he's doing the same thing. So, yeah, we were working on, on a plan to present to both governing bodies to where we can ask for support from the local law enforcement, again, to help us curb that, that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, what's the wish of the council? We have a motion to, and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, French, you know, I know they're talking about option C. This, how does the option C work into this? Because, you know, this just basically takes option C and, and that's what we're...
Because, you know, this just basically takes option C and, and that's what we're running with?
Yes, and the rates, um, based on the calculation, because the last document that you have that was uploaded is a four-page, and it shows a lot of breakdowns, so the rates can go from 44 cents a month all the way down to that 15, 60 per month. And those are the larger customers, like McDonald's, Taco Bell, those kind of customers, um, on the commercial side, and then the residential customers. So it goes from 44 to 15, but the majority are the residential and into, um, the mix of the other ones.
Okay.
So it takes into consideration on that, all of the accounts that we currently have.
Okay. Thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
And, and those rates will go in effect, um, July 1st, so they won't probably see that till August billing, because we go one month behind. So that's when the customers, and we'll do some, um, on the utility bill, like we can put whatever information, we'll put that probably now starting in June and July, so we give the customers a, a heads-up of the changes.
Okay. So, item C is Comnet Wireless Antenna Proposal. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna pass down two new pictures here, um, that go along with this proposal. And, uh, these are a result of my, um, asking, after seeing the, the photoshopped simulations of what a solid tower would look like, um, could they redo those pictures with a lattice structured tower, which gives an airier and lighter appearance? Um, basically, the proposal on this is that, um, and, and we talked briefly about it at our last meeting, that Comnet has proposed to replace the tower at the, uh, former police department building with a 100-foot tower that would increase their capacity to provide 4G communications, particularly into the downtown and the plaza area, where there are trees, uh, and other obstructions to the signal right now. And they have a shadowing effect between the buildings. Uh, it'd also give them a larger area, all the way out past the, the blinking light up to the pueblo. There's a proposal for a modest payment to the town for the first five years, after which that would, um, quadruple. My suggestion, uh, prior to your considering this specific proposal would be that, um, certainly there are other communications companies that would probably be interested in doing the same thing, and that, uh, in the, uh, to be fair to them, as well as to provide the greatest possible return, if you were to consider this, I would suggest that you direct staff to issue an RFP. Um, and I, I agree with Councilman Peralta, that it would make more sense that the location be here at, um, the town complex, rather than the old police building, which we might be, um, selling or using or renting for another purpose at some future time. Also, we are installing the redundant servers, uh, up in our IT room, uh, which would be actually adjacent to where this antenna location's proposed, uh, for the new 911 Command Center once it is moved over to the county, so it would make more sense. And of course, we would put a condition on here, as the county is doing, and we should always do, that the town and the county and all public service, uh, public safety agencies reserve the right to put our equipment on that tower.
Councilor Peralta?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just, I just thought of, uh, something that other communities do in, in requiring the towers to be co-mfwatched, and this would be a 100-foot ponderosa plane. I'm just, I'm just wondering if that would even look worse than what this tower does?
We could go for a palm tree.
Mr. Mayor, Rick, what does this do with regards to our historic district ordinance or ordinance? I know when the previous administration put the new sign up at Town Hall, the LED sign, that they were in violation of their own ordinance, and are, are we okay with that?
Well, it would probably require a waiver, but considering it would involve the removal of one tower and the replacement of another, and this is, in, in a sense, on the, an outlier on the edge of the district, as opposed to being in the center of the district, I guess, uh, when I was a planning director, we used to say that when we granted variances, um, if, if the proposal continued to be a violation of the rule, but was a lesser violation, uh, that the public good was probably being better served than leaving the condition as it is.
I just, I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I think we're gonna get some pushback on the erection of that thing.
Councilor Han?
Go for it and see if we get the pushback.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Council, I have a, a similar concern, uh, with, uh, Councilman Gonzalez, and I'm going to presume that, uh, the structure will have to go through PNC and will be subject to public hearings.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, yes, that's correct. And what I would suggest is if, if you have any interest in pursuing this, what I would do is draft an RFP, include these pictures, and send it for a comment and a hearing to both the Historic Commission and the PNC to get their input. Quite frankly, if there's a lot of public opposition and they shoot it down, then I, I think we've kind of got our answer. And if it seems to be, you know, reasonable, that people see that as an improvement, as tearing the one down that's there now and pushing this to the outside, then I'll bring it back to you for consideration.
So you're looking for a direction from us, Mr. Bellis, um, to draft an RFP?
That's, that's my suggestion at this point, yeah.
I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and do that.
Well, and with regards to that, Rick, what is, what is the new broadband initiative gonna do with regards to this and with regards to upgrading? Is that tower even gonna be necessary?
Uh, Councilman Mayor, yes, it is. Um, there's a, just a burgeoning business in putting up towers throughout the county to cover, uh, shadowing spots, because now there's a, even a 4G plus, I can't remember what the name of it is. But, um, the, the, the ability to connect to the broadband actually gives them, uh, the ability to carry faster, uh, multimedia, uh, delivery systems through handheld devices. So, um, those devices are still connected by, you know, airwaves, and there's gotta be an interface between the broadband and the handheld device.
So what's the dollar amount, again, that we are to receive?
Uh, they, they've been whited out because it was felt that in, in fairness to the, the applicant, if we were gonna make a competitive bid out of this, but, um...
I'd like to see those. Just, just because I'm purely looking at it from the, the standpoint of what telemarketing communica, or telecommunications companies make, and what they're willing to give back for...
I, I would, I would say that...
They, they probably need us more than we need them.
I, I, I agree, Councilman. That's another reason I would suggest seeing what the market will bear, if we have interest in this.
Okay.
So we do have a motion on the floor by...
I will say it is in the tens of thousands in the long term.
Good. By Councilor Han?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? None? Hearing none? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
So, um, the next matter is from the mayor and council is a Spring Ditch site visit, and, uh, just want to, uh, turn to you, Jake. I mean, we can go on the site visit, but do we need to return here to adjourn the meeting, or, or... Just you, Mayor.
Um, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you know, I don't think we do. I think, um, I don't know that we could exclude the public to the extent the public wanted to tag along, um, with sort of some reasonable restrictions on that. Um, I'd be happy to take minutes. I'm gonna suggest that we limit our discussion and really have no discussion, other than perhaps, uh, asking French questions where appropriate. Any substantive discussions that involve the lawsuit should be reserved for another time. Um, and as long as we kind of follow those parameters, I think we could, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn without having to return back here, and I'll, I'll just take the minutes.
And, and one of the reasons I'm asking, too, is I might have to step away from this, because we have a bridge that the Department of Transportation wants to review, and, uh, it's a serious matter. This, you know, we have, it's a school bus, uh, route, and they're considering closing one of the bridges, so I need to meet with them, and then I'll re-join.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, just for the public's benefit, this site visit kind of came about because of this ongoing lawsuit, and it became clear that more than two of the members of the council and mayor were interested in going to the site at some point, and, uh, I thought it most convenient just to try to do it at once. Um, I, I don't want to over-formalize this. If, if we have a quorum out there, then we need to make sure we're complying with the Open Meetings Act. If we don't, uh, you know, I actually haven't verified with everyone who all's going, so, um, I told, I just told French we'd meet him on Saint-Denis-Steban Lane and kind of take it from there. So, um, what time is your meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Right now.
Okay.
Actually, I just got a text that they're waiting for me at the bridge, so...
Well, let's put it this way. I'll take care of the procedural stuff in order to wrap this meeting up. Um, can you just, can I ask the council, is everyone else going on the site visit? Okay. So we will have a quorum, so I'll, I'll make sure that there's a motion to adjourn.
And I'll be right back there as soon as, just gotta look at the bridge and make sure that we can get it.
Okay, well, if you can't find us, just give me a call on my cell phone.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we have the airport van here to transport the council to the site.
Oh.
Wow. Got a driver and everything.
Wow. Did you guys, uh, nobody has theirs? Might even pick up the, the one?
Pick up the Wi-Fi?
Yeah.
Wouldn't, we wouldn't open?
Mr. Mayor?
No one can add to?
Just...
Here?
Yeah. Mr., Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for a motion to, uh...
Proceed to the site?
Proceed to the site visit, so Fransella can fill in her...
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Call for the vote.
Uh, Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Good luck.
You're going?
No, I'm going to...
Oh, oh.
You've gotta go to the bridge, or a bridge.